All right, it's called order the work session for the County Board of Supervisors. We're meeting in the hearing room on Melody Lane, ARS 38431.02H. Public will have access to the meeting room 15 minutes prior to the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion. Members of the board may attend in person or via Microsoft Teams. Members of the public may also attend via Teams or the mobile app. Work sessions are a time for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors, and public comment will not be taken. Roll call, District One.
Mr. Gomes.
District Two, as we stated earlier, Ms. Gomez is attending some ADOT meetings this morning. District Three, Antonori is here, so two supervisors present and one absent. So again, we'll go to Ms. Gilman.
We have Daryl Crowley, our Director of Facilities, to go over the facilities budget. Facilities budget contains just the general fund as well as the capital funds. I'm not sure that's on the sheet, but they also have a capital fund that's outside of the general fund, right? Am I explaining that correctly? And so I'll hand it over to Daryl.
All right, cool. Thank you, everybody, and good to see you. I actually have the budget worksheet on the top, but I also brought along, just because I don't know how familiar the new supervisors are with what actually Facilities does, because it's a very broad scope of work that we do. It's, like I say, anything you can think of that has anything to do with the building, the parking lot, the air conditioning, all falls under us, as well as the transfer stations, and it just goes on and on and on and on. So again, like I say, we brought a work order count, just to give you an idea. In the nine months that we have been operating this year, we already have over 1,200 work orders that we have. I was looking this morning, and I think of that 1,200, only 130 of them are still open. So the guys do an awesome job of taking care of it. And as you go down that list, you can see where all the money is dispersed from on those reporters. It's, like I say, it's a very broad, a broad scope. We do a lot of different stuff, everything from maintaining generators, the backup IT, the backup to health departments. There's a lot to it. Again, I wasn't, like I say, with new supervisors, I didn't know just how much you guys knew what we do, but it is very large. We also, I also brought a list of some of the unforeseen stuff that hits us that just jumps up out of the middle of nowhere that we try to make things for, and sometimes we get it, sometimes we don't. I'd say if you look through that list, lightning strike at BDI took out one of the pumps at the well, supplies DOC. So again, it's the shrinkings of the aquifer and ML Frida took out that well. They pulled the pump and redid the whole works, rebuilt the base, and started all over again. I, we, in our department, every day is a new day because there's something different coming.
So.
Yes, it's always pretty wild. And then when you throw in the fact that we have buildings that are 100 years old and stuff that, you know, is, well, for instance, we're building a new building, so that in itself is a whole nother, a whole nother deal. Because that all has to come under today's codes and not the code of 100 years ago. So it is quite a challenge. Unfortunately for me, I have a pretty good staff. Like I say, all my maintenance techs, my office staff, everybody does a pretty good job. So again, like I say, we have quite a few different water leaks in areas. The Douglas Road Yard seems to be, I'm wondering if we're not ready to start ripping some of that old stuff out and then replace it, because we're constantly down there trying to fix water leaks that just continue to, it's all still hot. And it's all rusted out, and again, at some point, we're going to have to just look at doing that.
Is it at the fire room?
Yes, it is. Like I say, one of the hangers at BDI, in this gigantic wind, took off 1,200 square feet of roof. So we're going to have to go back and patch it. It's just, some of this stuff, we tried to, I tried to do as much of this in-house as we can, just because when we start trying to contract it, granted, there are contractors here, our number of contractors that we can draw from is very limited. And then that in itself takes a ton of time. By the time we get three different contractors to give us viable quotes, it's just time consuming. So again, we try to do as much of it as we can in-house. The bigger projects, we definitely sell out.
With the lightning strike, you got a lightning rod on it, so that.
Oh yeah, no, that whole system has got all kinds of lightning protection, but there's times when it just, it just doesn't work. And unfortunately, the power supply down there at BDI is suspect to begin with. I think it was 18 months ago, and one of the big spring winds had laid out 10 or 12 poles there on one of the curves, and they were without power for three or four days, but they got that all put back. So again, it just isn't. If that way, just, I know that a lot of unforeseen issues that can arise at any given time, and then on top of that, the county's huge. And if you go into the next one, like I say, this is the list of all the vendors and where a bunch of this money goes in the vendors. Again, I just wanted to give you guys some support of where this money is all going. Again, and then if you get to the very back, you can look at our long-term range of what we're trying to do, reach where we're taking care of, HVAC replacement that we're looking at. Unfortunately, when we looked at this a couple of years ago, we knew within the next five years, 80 to 85% of all of our HVAC units were past due on being replaced. So we have.
Something brings up, I met this gal from McKinstry.
McKinstry?
McKinstry, yeah, yeah.
Kathy?
Kathy.
Good century.
Yeah, so what's the story? Did she talk to you?
And I have, I have, we've had, we reached out to several different companies a couple of years ago trying to get energy assessment, to look at what we can do.
Her claim to fame is they've got all these efficiencies that they can, you know, with lighting and HVAC and heating and stuff that, and ways of doing design and everything else that over a net amount of time saves a ton of money. And there's a gimmick in there, too. I couldn't quite understand what she was talking about with the leasing and offsets.
You're right, and I don't know where she was getting into leasing. But part of that, just to give you a little bit of a rundown on our HVAC system, as we bring on these new units, I am actually also purchasing the controls so that my HVAC guys can, anywhere in the county can access any of the HVAC units to see what's actually going on. We can control temperature, and as we go forward and we get more and more of these units on system, then we will start going into unoccupied mode. So like at 5:30 in the evening, the temperatures will quit holding at the 74 degrees and let the temperature rise, lower.
No, nobody there.
Right, and then come at 5 o'clock in the morning, they come back up. We've got the courthouse that's doing that, and that, and it's working very well. And then again, that's, it's a, it's a large amount of money to implement all of that, but in the long run, it will pay back. It just. So with that lady, we had spoke with her, when she was at a different company at the time, and two other companies, to get that audit, you know, take a look and see where can we do better. We had one company that ended up being on top, the other two kind of backed out. But in order to move forward at that point, it was $100,000 that we'd have to pay them upfront. And if we didn't do anything with them, they'd get $100,000. If we did, then that money would go, you know, be part of the whole, the whole investment grade audit and moving forward. But the issue we had is, we know these things we need to do. We just need to get the funds and time and manpower to change out LED lights, to replace one of them. And that's where McKinstry is telling us that they have the grant writers, they have the people, the staff that goes and looks through all the federal funding that's available to the counties and whatnot, so that we can, not only knowing what we need to fix, we have the funding, and then they will help us manage to get that taken care of.
Do you think there's any validity there?
I do, I do believe, I do believe there is, yes, I do. Again, that's why we've talked to them, and I think Kathy and I have now been conversing back and forth for probably a year and a half, almost two years, because Snyder Electric did a big project with the city of Sierra Vista. They're doing one with a college, and that was, that was the company that wanted a bunch of money upfront to do what we. And again, it was like, I don't so much need somebody to tell me what we need to do. Help us, help us fund it and help us do it, is what we were after. And again, McKinstry says we don't have to come up with money upfront to do this. So that's kind of why we stuck with them and tried to see how much farther we can take this.
Okay. All right, Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to process over this, the flow chart that the money guy from the treasurer's owns. And this has to do with, is there going to be a jail tax or not? And if there is not a jail tax, then we're talking about a much smaller jail project, which I have noted there. And so I noticed that you had three things with the jail. Water leaks in the Bisbee jail in the vault, water leaks in Bisbee jail parking lot, Bisbee jail powered water HVAC. Okay, so can you tell us, give us an idea of what kind of expenses there are? If this jail tax doesn't pass, and therefore we have a much smaller jail project based on what's already coming in now, what kind of repairs are absolutely, have to be done to the jail?
To the jail now?
Yeah.
We've got, there's quite a bit. Just to give you an idea, the, I was in the kitchen a couple of weeks ago, Friday afternoon. We got a call, power's out in the kitchen, we've got to go figure out what's going on. And part of it, I truly believe, is some of the appliances that they use in that kitchen have not been upgraded. They're pulling way too much power, making.
Tripping breakers.
That's what it was doing, they tripped out the whole, the whole system. And when you get to talking to that kitchen staff, they're like, oh yeah, that one works sometimes, sometimes it doesn't. Of course, that's where the issues are caused, you know? The refrigerators or the freezers are pulling too much power, tripping breakers, and then if they have too much of it on at the same time, it, again, that's, that's where part of this is at. HVAC we replaced a year ago, and it hadn't even been a year. We replaced all of the HVAC units on, on the pods. And that was, again, and those HVAC units were all 25 years old. They had been worked to death. Maintenance hadn't been taking care of them quite like they were supposed to. So again, it adds taxing to the lack of those systems. But as it is, most HVAC systems, lifetime is only 15 years, and we've got stuff that's 25 and 30 years old throughout the county. So we just actually pulled some off a couple of weeks ago in Wilcox that were 30 years old. So fortunately, they've been mucking them along and keeping them running.
So how about buildings, you know, like we got the one in Benson, we got the one in Wilcox, how utilized are those?
Those are quite, quite, quite used. I say, yes, they are. The service center, we got the health departments, ports, the UFA's in them, the sheriff department's there, and all of it. It's the same everywhere. They are very, very full of people.
What is the nature of the water leak in the Bisbee jail parking lot?
Well, we've had several of them there, and it, well, it, again, it's.
Is the one. Is it the water line? Is the main water line that goes into the jail?
In some cases, yes, some cases it's lines that are tied to that. The guys that, whoever put all that system in, in my opinion, did not bed it correctly. They just stuck it in, because that's what we find when we go, that hillside up there is nothing but a bunch of rocks. And that's what they backfill all the ditches with, so anytime a pickup or truck.
Punctures a hole.
Knocks a hole in it. And in some cases, it's some of the metal in it is rusting away. It, like I say, there's, it's just numerous, numerous things that are occurring.
So, you know, Mr. Cosm brings up some good points. So this new jail, right, you're talking about the guys that did old jail did things that maybe, that was 50 years ago, and things are different now, you know, rules are different, code is different. But from your experience with regard to maintenance, I mean, have you been talking to Chin at all? Does he talk to Chin?
He's part of the technical advisory.
Okay, good, 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 that's what I'm getting at. So you're identifying the heavy maintenance and the heavy, the likely failure points of certain things.
Right, and I truly believe, and not to point fingers at anybody, but over the years, that jail has not been maintained like it.
Well, we know, I saw the study, that is, that is a nationwide problem. Sheriff's nationwide don't maintain their jails.
And again, and that.
They just don't.
I truly believe the maintenance shouldn't be in the sheriff's department. It should be in the facilities. But at the same time, what causes that issue is the bedding of the technicians to go in and have access to the jail.
Statute says he's responsible for the jail, that's the.
You know, that's kind of where that's at, so.
I guess we got to go, that's another Title 11, change the maintenance of the jail. How would you go about estimating every fix that needs to be done?
At the jail?
If you don't have the access to it that you feel you need.
Well, I'm going to say, just because we've only done half of the air conditioners there, we didn't do anything over any of the administration. All we did was the pods. That was a half a million dollar bill, just doing those 13 units that we changed on that. I'm looking at, we need another $400,000 to do the alarm system.
Yeah, for sure.
We have, right, I've gotten two quotes. A third one was, I threw it out because it wasn't viable. It was so low that they're missing something, and part of the reason we have.
Well, they're, no, they're just going to Home Depot, finding a bunch of smoke alarms and.
We're part of a million. Exactly, exactly. And we have that, I have that issue throughout the county. We're trying to upgrade all of our alarmses. Again, part of them are antiquated, you know, they're 30 years old, and they should have been replaced long before that.
But a lot of the stuff from you, though, helping out with this thing, is that, you know, a lot of times I see engineers design things without considering the poor guy that's got to come in behind them and maintain it, right? And I always, my wife had a car that every time I had to work on that car, to change the battery, you had to pull the tire off. It was a Dodge. You have to take the front tire off and go up underneath the wheel well, pull the wheel well off. And I'm like, I would love to choke the living snot out of it. The engineer that designed this damn thing.
The guy's cooking.
Because it was just, it was just a mean maintenance engineer that didn't care about anybody having to maintain. Back to the point, right, since you're the guy, after all the construction's done, you're the guy, and your guys, your team's going to have to go in there and fix stuff. And it's going to break, stuff's going to break, but having easy access, having panels in places where you can get in there with something that's not some guy, some guy squeezing through a corridor to get in to fix pipes and stuff, right?
And they've talked about that when they come into the design phase, about how to put those access points where they need to fix the plumbing or something, so they don't have to go into a secured area to do it, they can just access it.
Yeah, but generally, you know, everybody, you have a utility room, but the utility room is only part of it. You have all these mechanicals that run through pipes and drops for.
That make it accessible.
Yeah, those have to be set up in a way where maybe it's up in a, or under, like where I work, everything's under the floor. All right, we have raised floors, and we run everything under the floors. And so if you have to fix it, it just should pull up the little floor panel, it's right there, it's easy to get to. You're not on ladders, or you're not. Going through, you don't have criminals trying to escape through. Well, I don't, I don't have criminals, I don't have, I don't have criminals trying to. But I mean, that's.
Right, and then that is part of the engineering that they have, that we have talked about.
Right.
In all the discussions of trying to develop a plan for what.
Right, you go over there now, all that stuff's running down the, you know, all the conduits, running down the ceiling. It's in a bad spot, right? Nobody put any thought into that.
So the other thing that we've talked about is having a dedicated, you know, Daryl being dedicated for the jail project when that goes to that point, because that purpose of knowing the facility side, making sure from the project management that facility is ready to go in that Billy Wensby bill, whether Daryl or a project manager under Daryl. That's been part of this discussion the whole time, is make sure that we have that facility's representation in the jail.
And I do, I do believe the operation of the jail, sheriff, but the maintenance of the jail, to make sure that this doesn't, because I read that, I read that study that was the National Association of Sheriffs or whatever it is, and, you know, they basically said that it is a national issue because if it comes to putting more deputies out on the street versus fixing the lights, they're going to put, they're always going to go this direction, right? So there's got to be, I think, a mod to Title 11 to say, okay, the sheriff is only responsible for the operation of the jails. The maintenance and upkeep of that jail should be the Board of Supervisors, and by that default, you, Mr. Cosm.
Mr. Chair, do you foresee, under some circumstances, in the not-too-distant future, like I said, during your term, demolition of the current jail, like was suggested by Chin?
I do not. I don't know, because you have to look at the insurance aspects of it. If you want to reutilize it for something else, for storage, you're probably going to be okay.
I guess that all comes down to the space planning, I think, when she was talking about that, you know, if you demolish, that was one of the blocking scenes that she had, was that if you, as a spite location, if you demolish.
Oh yeah, well, that is not.
Whole other discussion.
We are not building, as far as I'm concerned, the new jail anywhere near the old jail. But the aspect, when we're talking about for whether we're going to demolish that jail, is going to be based on your assessment. If it's not worth the money to maintain it, and there's nothing that we could utilize it for that has a safety or insurance issue, then what purpose is it, just?
There's lots of ideas.
Going back to my flow chart.
I got you.
Tax passes, tax doesn't pass.
I, I, yeah.
You'd be thinking about it.
I know, I know.
Thinking about it.
I know, but I'm just getting back to the point, though. If, well, then there may be a decision to do something different.
Band-aids.
Well, we can.
And that's why I'm asking how much the band-aids cost.
The band-aids are expensive.
They're expensive, they are, you bet.
Yes, well, I mean, again, I watched some of these commercial buildings and how they are built. Real, like, I mean, driving to work the other day, they're just right next to the airport now. They just cleared an entire lot, and I went by two weeks later, and there's already walls up everywhere on the.
Breaking.
Yeah, and it was just unreal, right? And they're concrete, concrete wall, two-story tall, already they got the entire. Yes, I got, I got you, I got you. It's just, it's the, it's the, the speed at which they're moving is just, is just remarkable to me, right?
And with that efficiency comes costing, so a major cost.
Right, so I'm like thinking, I'm like, man, I wonder, I'm half tempted to walk up and try to find the project manager and ask him what this building's going to cost. I may not want to know the answer, because he may say it's a $25 million building. I'm going to go, what? This big ass building is only $25 million? And we're talking 120, 130 million for a jail? I'm like, I'm trying to, I mean, I talked to the Walmart guys in Rita Ranch, it was $37 million to build Super Walmart. And that included land acquisition and everything else, 37 million for a big ass Super Walmart.
But you've got to realize, too, that that's exterior walls and.
Yeah, I got, I understand that. I'm just, I'm just looking at, you know, we have a company that, again, engineers, I work with them. They're the smartest men in the world on the planet, but they always go too far, right? So sometimes 80% is sufficient, you don't have to have that 100%, right?
True, and we don't have a budget.
Right, right, so design to cost, as you say, this, right? So, but requirements is my life, right? So usually somebody drafts a requirement. So for the maintenance aspect, having an input on the requirement for maintaining this jail versus like the sheriff provides how many beds he needs, or how many cells or whatever.
Right.
That requirement, but this is.
And talking about what kind of, you know, what is, do we have training on? Like we talked about the HVAC's train versus carrier and what they're used to work.
Accessibility on where you're going to put us on the roof to get a screen in and out, right? So it takes two seconds versus three days to swap out an air conditioner, right? So all of that, yeah. Because sometimes, sometimes architects are just, they're literally puzzle piecing, right? They're trying to, they're trying to fit everything together, and they don't necessarily consider, you know, the maintenance.
What it fits.
Yeah, what it fits, I mean, that's what, I know, I've seen that, yeah, yeah. So that's, that's all I'm saying is, and there's cost savings to that aspect in the long run, like we were talking about with the McKinstry, right? So certain features that can be built in. She had mentioned it to me, where, you know, you don't necessarily have to put lights in. There's, there's these solar LED things that she was telling me about. That during the daytime, it's like a skylight that lets light through, but it's actually collecting power. It's filtering electricity, and then at night, there's a switch, it turns it, and they glow at night, and they turn into lights at night. So, and she was telling me how much money that saves, right? It actually costs.
You got to replace.
No, 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 but there's a CBA that gets a cost benefit analysis, right? That's what we were talking about. There's, there's certain savings that you get over time, right? You got to recover, you know, some is viable, that's why you do CBAs, because sometimes it's worth it, sometimes it's not. But that's why I talk into her and getting, and if she can find grants.
Oh, you bet, that's why we're still talking.
Right, right, if she can find grants for that LED lighting, or she, you know, we don't have to pay for that, or we don't have to pay for this, you know, then that's.
Are you talking about the potential for that type of system in a new jail?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, to where we don't pay for it, where there's grant monies, energy saving grant monies out there that maybe they can, you know, for certain types of things, that you can get grant money to at least eat some of the cost, maybe pay half of it or something, you know, that's what I'm getting at.
What I'm getting at is, what if the tax doesn't pass?
Well, then, well, that's, 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 you can't put it off. No, 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 yeah, we got to talk about it, you know? And that's where, you know, there's other, other building designs that are far less expensive, that are not optimal, but will be sufficient, you know? I mean, our pile put tents up, for crying out loud, right? You know?
Back to the facility.
Yeah, yeah. No, but it's viable, because, you know, I just want to make sure he's, he's.
Is there anything that you were requesting this year?
No, like I say, my budget this year is virtually the exact same as what we ran last year. And we're going to end up, we're going to be a little tight here as we get closer to the end of the year, but that's what it's supposed to be, what it's supposed to be. And again, I don't see any major expenditures other than what we've done. And, you know, we're looking at doing Building A, the HVAC here, and then we're moving back to service to do the JDC.
What's the JDC?
That's, no, that's the juvenile detention center.
Okay. Back to the court.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I guess it is, of course, I think that it is.
I did, I was really aware.
To add some sewer issues.
And again, we have, I have a, I have a long-term list of our HVAC replacements that we're, I think we're looking at three or four this next year, and then three or four the following year. And then we should be getting pretty close to being caught up, so. But unfortunately, every one of those is a quarter to a half a million dollars every time we hit a building.
30 grand for elevators, where we got elevators at?
We got four elevators.
Where do we have four elevators?
I have one in the courthouse, I have one in the admin building, I have one at the Douglas Service Center, and we have one over here in Building A.
So the old admin building is next to the courthouse, and that's a historical building as well, it used to be.
So what's in there?
Well, it used to be, that used to be only one of the county.
Probation, attorneys.
There's a courthouse in there, courtroom.
Yeah, there's a courtroom in there, that's where Judge Thorne's office is at.
I just got to start getting some time to start driving around and popping in.
And that's cheap, we built the two of them, the two major and the older ones, so.
I mean, we didn't, so we've been.
Yeah, you feel you're busy.
I haven't had time to go walk about. Yeah, I've been wanting to walk about, go walking around.
Just 150 yards from here, there's an elevator.
Yeah, so.
And again, that's part of the reason I provided this information, just so you understand where all this money.
No, I got, no, I got you, I got you, I got you, I'm just, well, I saw the crane out there with, the other day, you know, I got, I got it. You know, stuff, stuff, stuff breaks, especially in a frickin' Arizona with 120-degree normal temperature, and then the humidity's so low, everything dry rots and cracks. The sun is just brutal.
It is, but on tires, like a dude driving down the highway, you see all the.
Oh, the road heaters?
Yeah, retreads, yeah. But, you know, one of the other things that, you know, I did it to my house was I got that rubberized coating painted on my house. That was one of the best things I ever did. It's like a four-mill thick, and it's got a, it has some R factor, but that's not what it is. What it does is it seals all the air, makes your house airtight. And then I went and upgraded my doors and windows, so it's actually like.
Too tight.
Too tight, it is super sealed, super, super, super sealed, super sealed, but it's really great for my electric bill, went way down after that. And I was really shocked at the, how much my electric bill went down, air conditioning bill, because there's no air leaking out now. I'm not air conditioning the neighborhood. Dragoon, Arizona, just air conditioning my house. So I mean, those stupid little things, just little, little things, I mean, $10,000 here, but over time, now I'm going to say, you know, $100 a month on my electric bill.
The block balls?
80, what's that?
Block balls or stucco?
No, I'm stucco, I'm stucco, but it takes away the texture a little bit. My wife was a little uptight about that. But what they do is they really go through and seal everything with a caulk first, and then they spray this rubberized coating over the top of it, and it seals everything, and it stretches. So if you get a crack in your stucco, you don't see it, it's underneath the.
It's very similar, it's very similar to the products that we use on the roofs.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah. The last America, whatever.
There's a last America.
20, yeah, so it's 20, 20-year warranty on it.
Wow.
You know, so, but I was amazed at how much it made a difference, like getting dust in the house now, too? Because what it does, it creates positive pressure now on the house. So it.
Dust blowing.
So, but those stupid little things like that save time, money, hassle down the, down the road. And my wife is telling me that the air filters are.
Perfectly clean.
Well, not perfectly clean, but they're not like they used to be, where you're constantly changing air filters, right? Because all the dust gets sucked in there, you know, because that's the other side, right? Because you have, the air returns in your house are sucked in. You know, cause that's the other side, right? Cause you have, the air returns in your house are sucking. You know, you're blowing air out through the cracks, you're sucking air in through the cracks. So all that gets taken care of. So it, it, energy efficient wise. But that's the stuff that I was talking to the McKinstry.
And, and that's, and that's the reason that we're talking to them. Cause there, there is some large savings to be had, but again, it takes, it takes.
So when you're building a new jail or a new building or whatever, if you put all that consideration in there, you know, while you're building it, you don't have to worry about retrofitting, which costs twice as much as initially building it in the first place. I just wanna make sure that the people that are gonna be taking care of this stuff has input into, well, that's good.
And when is the new building gonna be complete though?
Looking probably sometime June.
For the new.
I, I, when, when we started that, and that, that's gonna be the holdup is the electric service panel was like over a year out when we ordered it. Um, it'll be here sometime in June. If they don't leave it back on us.
Seems a late time for a year on an electrical panel?
I got one at BDI at the same one. Um, it, we've been working on it.
Take it slow.
Running for the courthouse to plow too.
Yeah. It's just a, it's a bent, it's a bent. Spot welded box painted gray.
It'd be nice if that's all it was good.
Yeah, yeah. Well, well, it's got the, the, the breaker.
Disconnects and breakers and all kinds of stuff in there, but yeah.
Wow, are they custom built?
Um, in some cases, yes, they are.
Oh, okay.
And they're not, they're not, and then, and really it's not so much custom build as they not billing any until they get the order. And so that's, the order line is just backed up horrendously.
All right, all right. So they don't keep a rolling stock of commercial off the shelf.
No, I, I think we can, we can thank COVID for that. Cause I think that's when everything that they had in stocks, plus they ate it, right? The way, the way the economy works today, they don't get the tax breaks that they have it in stock. So um, they don't stock it.
All right.
Um, so again, I, I, I'm, I'm, we're not asking for anything extra this year, then, then we'll just, just keep me funded and we'll be good to go.
That's an easy answer there.
You bet. So if there's anything else, you guys, I like say, if there's any individual number or any individual you wanna go over, I'd be glad to help you out.
I answered all my questions. Anything else, Mr.?
I just uh, just gotta keep on this what-if business about jail. So I know that that's kinda.
Well, I mean, that's, that's where when we, we talk about the keeping the old jail and maintaining the old jail, the cost benefit analysis on that, from what we're hearing is gonna be off the charts. The cost.
Well, I, I understand that.
Yeah, yeah.
But.
Placing steel pipes in parking lots that are, you know.
Exactly.
Fifty years old, so eventually it's not worth it. But building a inexpensive building, you know, you have to look at that as well.
The only, the only other thing I know about building a new jail is you have to build it to today's standards and that, that, that is where the biggest costs is coming. Just because we can't, we can't build what we have. They, they won't let us.
But, oh, you, you're talking about if you renovate, you gotta upgrade code?
Right, right. And, and the same with, same with the new one is it has to meet today's codes and
Right.
They are way more strict than, than, than nothing else.
Yeah, hated.
Okay, like the fire alarm and stuff. I don't have anything else. You got anything else?
Oh, thank you.
Right, next, uh, next meeting's at one o'clock with our emergency services guy. We're turned till one.